Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday, March 19, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Before we get started this evening, I thought I would just quick address the constituents on what's going on in our city right now with our flooding. I think by this time next week, we may be in a very different position as a city with what's happening with our impending flooding. Hopefully you've kept an eye on media reports and have been following the city to see what's coming, and if you live in the floodplain, you're taking the appropriate actions. Congressman Dusty Johnson was here today, and he said something that I thought was good. As he was touring, he was talking about the work with the state and the feds, and he said, you know, this is not an effort about political agendas, but more about it. This is a team sport to do the right thing and to do what's right for our people in our city. I thought that was a really great statement by Dusty. So the next five to seven days are going to be pretty critical. We have opened up some sandbagging operations now, and the city emergency response team is doing an absolutely incredible job. I have been taking the approach with them, not to manage, simply to lead and get out of their way, because they're doing a very, very good job at managing the operations of this effort, working with the state, working with the Department of Corrections, coordinating with the governor. So my ask of the citizens is continue to be patient and also to be prepared. If you don't feel like you're going to be impacted, we could certainly use volunteers. Two-on-one helpline for that. SiouxFalls.org/flood is where you're going to get all the resources and information you need to know about the flood. Would also ask my fellow colleagues at the dais to continue to let the city focus on the operations of this. Process is working. The people are incredible, and I'm letting them lead, and we'll continue to let them lead in this. So my button here, a theme we've had in the city is "One Sioux Falls," and I've really seen the Sioux Falls employees and the community band together. It's been neat to see. I think we're a strong community, resilient, and I think we'll be resilient through this. So your thoughts and prayers would certainly be welcome for people who have been affected and who will be affected in the next week or so. So with that, we'll go ahead and get our meeting started, and Tom, let's read the roll, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Here.
Breckie?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
All right. Honored to have Pastor Zach Ochoga from Central Church here tonight to give the invocation. Zach's ready to get back to his kids. He's got four kids under the age of six, he told me, and they were bummed that their dad had to leave, but I said, "It's for a good cause." So Zach is here to give our invocation, so if you would rise for that, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
The first thing I want you to do is to pray. Pray every way you know how, for everyone you know. Pray especially for rulers and their governments to rule well, so we can be quietly about our business of living simply in humble contemplation. This is the way our Savior God wants us to live. And with this, Father, I lift up my voice on behalf of this city, on behalf of this council. I pray for the mayor and the council members. I ask for your wisdom as they deliberate and have discussions and make decisions for this city. I ask that it will be inspired by wisdom that comes from you. I pray for your blessing upon each of them, the mayor and council members. I ask for your blessing upon this city, the city of Sioux Falls. I pray, my Father, that you would make this city a model to other cities in the United States. Father, I pray that you would give this city breakthroughs in areas that they have struggled, in areas where it's been difficult to come about with solutions. But by your supernatural intervention, I ask that, Lord, we will see breakthroughs in these areas, oh God. I ask your protection upon the people of this city. I ask for your protection upon members of this council and the mayor. I pray for everyone in this city, especially with the flood that is anticipated. I ask that you protect each person from evil. I ask for your intervention even in this anticipated flood, that, Lord, your hand will be seen, and praise and glory be given to you. I thank you, Father, for I see that others from other cities will come here to figure out how it's been done here, so it can be replicated in other parts of this nation. Thank you for hearing us, for in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to item four, which is our consent agenda. Ask if there are any changes or motions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Erickson.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw item number 23 per the applicant's request.
And I believe I need a second on that.
Second, Selberg.
Okay, Councilor Selberg, motion by Erickson, seconded by Selberg to withdraw item 23. Any discussion on that, or?
For the applicant.
For the applicant, got it. All right, I need a vote to withdraw that item then, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that's passed eight to zero. Any other changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the remaining of the consent agenda.
All right.
Second, Selberg.
Motion by Erickson and seconded by Selberg on that. Any discussion? All right, the vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that has passed eight to zero. We'll move on to our regular agenda, and I look for a motion on that.
Second, Kylie.
All right, move to approve by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion, council? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We're at the general public input portion of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on on the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes, unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. And at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public forward for general public input, and clerk, note our time is 7:08. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Riffle. I'm an advocate for those that don't have shelters, homeless and displaced persons. I was given a note by a gentleman. He says, "South Sudanese lost boy who died under the bridge of Sioux Falls, South Dakota was Noah Mae Coa Aco." Last time I was here, I did a moment for silence in respect to this person who could very much have been somebody great and important. There was three people. Two couldn't sit still on my left. You'd think they were in kindergarten. And then one on my right couldn't keep her eyes off me for the whole minute, never bowed their heads, never respected anybody. We have another deceased person at the park. This is before the floodwaters. Now, I've been out there till 3:30, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning, all through the night, looking for people. I asked our city to keep an eye out for the people who might have not made it through the floodwaters. We found some of the gear, but we don't have everybody accounted for. Also, I have a word here from the Church of the Streets for those that need laundry because the waters are tainted, et cetera, et cetera. You can look that over and come out and have your laundry done. Has a blessing to you. I'm so embarrassed, and I'm so upset with my city council. I just can't believe these are so cold-hearted that you can't find a building open to get people in. They can't even get in during the day now anymore. I don't know what you're hearing, but I know what I know. I know who they are, and I know where they are. I had one family, the gentleman just got a paper for housing to get a place. He died in the park Saturday before the flood. I never got him into the place for Monday. I sit with furniture and beddings and food and everything for him. I won't bother you with a minute of silence because I don't want him disrespected. But I ask you to just take it into your heart for a few minutes. Open up a place for these people to go to. They need to get their selves cleaned up. They need to have respect. They need to get medicine. They need you to at least think about them more than just garbage. They're more than garbage, and they're my friends. I've helped many of them. I had one man say to me, "I don't want to die out here on the streets." All of our friends, Katie, are 49, 50 years old dying. Wouldn't you know, he's the man that died at the park, 49 years old. Couldn't identify him, but they knew he was 49 years old. So I'm just disrespec-- just, I don't know the word. I'm just so disgusted in the fact that you just don't make good decisions to help other people. You shouldn't need a disaster to hit Sioux Falls to do that. Have a good night. I'm back out on the streets. Don't forget, Church of the Streets.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Ciano. I nearly passed out in my way walking over here from the main library. I cited my disability as a basis for possible special leniency in my presentations, as sometimes I'm actually absolutely unable to address this body. And it was misrepresented in the so-called minutes as that I was referring to my veteran status. Such appears to be a pattern. Yes, what I have been presenting is an attack on me for my disability and my beliefs, starting in the Navy in '76, and which caused my disability in '78. Been covered up. I can't trust the VA. I come to Falls Community Health and local, your Human Relations Department attorneys are not serving me, the people, in accordance with my needs as a disabled person. I made it clear. This is a complaint, and others have spoken of complaints, and the minutes do not say that. There's nothing about a complaint, and I can go down the list, but I'm just so dizzy right now. But I want to be able to get this in. I want you to know what's really going on, and there was one, there was complaint about the Midco Aquatic Center, somebody's treatment there. Two people complained. There was nothing about a complaint in the minutes covering it. There was other about you people serving, special interests rather than the public. That has not been made clear in the minutes as well. So Falls Community Health, I was, I made it clear that I needed them to get certain documentation that would show what was being done to me, that would give them a basis of obtaining money, perhaps, well, by force somewhat, that could be applied to my needed medical care. And that is their contractual service to the public. So I'm talking about city entities, and I guess it's county-city both, but, and southeastern behavioral health care, where public funds have gone to, has also been involved in a conspiracy to misrepresent me in order to deny me. And that's what's been going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Cher Rosa de Sharon. I've come before you in the past, particularly regarding my tire and when I ran over it. And I just wanted to start out, if we could do this one here. It's Lent, and on March 15, I got on my knees and I prayed, and I prayed every, everybody I ever met, and I forgave them. I forgave everybody, everybody, like way back there. And then I was remembered I didn't forgive the city. So, Mr. Mayor and city council, I just want to let you all know that I forgive you of the debt for my tire, and I'm hoping that as we move forward as a council, and especially with the potholes, that other people would realize that maybe their insurance or a friend could help them out, and I'm hoping that a lot of people will take the initiative of the benevolence and be a part of the solution instead of the problem. And with that being said, Mr. Mayor and city council, I came up with an idea last night. I want you to know, I stayed up all night, and I wrote it all out, and then I got to the library to print it, and it died because the library turned off on me. So, Mr. Mayor and city council, I have been thinking of an idea, and Mr. Mayor and city council, you'll probably have to figure out the right date, but I would like to do a fundraiser, fundraiser, and I would like to host it at a city event center. I would like to invite the entire city at no charge, bring $1 perhaps, or donation, or a can. I'm expecting perhaps 20,000 people who would show up, 10,000 at most, and I'm also wondering about the probability of whether or not we could entice our business leaders like Merlin Row and Henry Nelson Construction and several others to be in a position where they would be willing to donate to the city $10,000 worth of their invested interest of their own business time into the city efforts, and then move it down into the construction workers, where they would perhaps give $500 or $1,000 of their time and energy within their company perspectives, and then move it into furniture and resell furniture and consignment stores and Ace Hardware, and perhaps where people can bring gift cards. And that alone, Mr. Mayor and city council, if we were able to collaborate with our business leaders, would bring us $225,000. And along with that, I also came up with an idea. If we wanted to have a little fundraiser, $100 per stone, we could have it on the backside of Falls Park, and they could be a dedication, like Unity Park, to Uncle Steve Metley. Those would be 100. That would bring in 10,000. I was thinking we could sell flags and promotional products that say Sioux Falls. That would bring in 5,000. And of the 7,000 potholes that we have, that means we have $140,000 worth of pothole damage, if it's an average of 200 each, and perhaps $10,000 to put an app together for that. And I just would like to say, Mr. Mayor and city council, I did write this all out with the approval and conversations with Dan Greiner, all the fans, and everybody.
Thank you, Cher.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Heather Lewis. My husband Ted and our five kids are here this evening. We, last week, experienced significant flood damage to our home. We live in a split home, split-level home, and our lower level was completely ruined. And now we are living out of a hotel, and I know we're not alone in this situation. There are other people in our neighborhood and throughout the city who are experiencing this as well, and they don't have the resources that even we have, and even some of the education that we have and understanding how to use our resources. And so I'm encouraging you and others who have resources, whether it's helping understand their insurance, because it's very confusing in a stressful time. I know if there's a way to reach out to help people understand what they can do to help themselves and help each other. This experience has been very stressful and difficult, and it's very easy to look down and become your own pity party planner, and it's important to look up, look around you, look up to God, and look at your fellow neighbors and just people in the community, and realize that you're not alone, and we can help each other. This has definitely pushed me outside of my comfort zone, and being an introvert, this is a big deal for me, reaching out to people that I never would have thought I would have the courage to reach out to. And I just want to encourage all of us to help each other, and the littlest things can be so helpful, you know, whether you bring a meal to somebody, whether you buy them some diapers. We have twins. Just kidding. You can be someone's hero in the littlest ways. It makes such a difference. Help each, help each other, help themselves. My husband travels a lot, and he likes to leave encouraging notes for the cleaning staff, and since we're still there, we got a note back, and I just wanted to share one of the things that she said. "And do not forget to do good and to share with others, for with such sacrifices, God is pleased." Hebrews, Chapter 13, verse 16. So, thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Good evening. Mayor, city council, thank you so much for taking public input. My name is Rhonda Heller. I love Sioux Falls. I love so much about my city. One thing that has been an ongoing issue for many of us is illegal massage in Sioux Falls. Over the years, we've tried to combat that with a state board, with the city here, with the police, with the attorneys here, and the state's attorneys. And yesterday, something happened that your names were brought into, one specifically brought into. And we have a city, we have an advocate here, a citizens advocate named Sierra Broussard. And yesterday, she was live. I did not see any trespassing. She was live on Facebook, and you can watch it on her Facebook. She was live for an hour and 44 minutes. At one hour and 13 minutes, someone who was a representative of Cutler, Mr. Cutler owns the building, that was a representative, came out and attempted to take Sierra's phone from her, told her to stop videoing, said things to her like, "Find something else to do. You don't know anything. Everything, everyone thinks you're, and you are." I'm friends with, she named a certain city council member by her maiden name. She says, "You'll be sorry once you're, once you're, once you're done messing with me." She said that this, this illegal massage place where there has been two guilty pleas, and one person has to still come in front of the judge on April 1, she said that she has helped her get her license. She is not on the licensure of the state board. She is not a licensed massage therapist. And yet males have been going in there between 30 minutes and an hour continually since August, when she got arrested. And she also pled guilty in 2016. Unfortunately, the other place, Miracle Massage, it's Asian Moonlight Relaxation Center, and Miracle Massage is also owned by Mr. Cutler. It appears like we might have something really happening here between a citizens advocate, and then she said to her, "And you know, all those city councilors that you think are listening to you, they're not." And then she goes into Sierra's gender. I about dropped my teeth. What's going to happen here, I think, is Sioux Falls might be, if this goes, if this goes viral and ACLU gets involved, I don't think it's going to be good for the city of Sioux Falls. This is all due to illegal massage, and a landlord who knows that there have been arrests, and there has been no licensure here. The only thing this woman is capable of is selling small bottles of oils, and that's not what she's doing.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Sierra Broussard, Sioux Falls. Don't we have a lovely city here, right? So I have a arresting officer that arrested me and didn't even have the right to do that. I want feedback from what they did to that officer. I will hold Mayor Tenhaiken accountable for his chief of police, because it falls back on his police chief for having a not-well-managed police department. I will hold him to the fullest. Let's get back to Chief Burns's presentation. It was very vague, and it wasn't on track. So let's get to reality of the police department. Kurt Saul, I have your crime statistics for each district and what it is about. They're trying to see, since it took a little bit over an hour to see how much they're going to charge me for the report. Each district will have what the crime is, how many arrests have been made in each district, which should have been to the council members' hands from your chief of police. Got to let the chief of police, right? It's not our chief of police, it's the city hall's chief of police. I spoke to 39 officers and sergeants, and I'm proud to say what they said on these streets that I had conversation with. A reverse sting has to be done the right way, which is the right way on a reverse sting to catch the johns. It takes 12 hours. There's 10 officers at $30 to pay per officer, and it's costing the citizens $2,500 for reverse sting on the streets. Police don't have, they said that don't have enough officers to be more proactive in neighborhoods. This is coming from police officers and sergeants, not your upper management. Chief Burns has given officers more time for human trafficking, prostitution, and pimping. Go figure that one, right? Because I come to city input all the time and expose stuff, so he doesn't have any choice but to do that, right? Most of the crimes are drug and alcohol-related, not your prostitution and your human trafficking, because I have all the names and cases, and only one was busted, two males, in a room with prostitution with marijuana and a controlled substance. The judicial system is a problem. We arrest people, we try to hold them accountable and do our job, and the judicial system lets them out. Dealers, instead of selling eight balls, are selling ounces and pounds. Bishop Delly does not cooperate with law enforcement. Murray Properties doesn't cooperate with law enforcement. The police officers need to be at the national average or above on pay raises. No pay for special duties, SWAT, narcotic street crimes, or the negotiation. Thank the mayor for the crime that's happening in our district and central district.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm John Mathias from Sioux Falls, and I would like to compliment and thank various council members, the mayor, and department heads for your efforts in using multiple mediums to keep the public updated on matters of interest, particularly with our recent flood situation. The multiple mediums have included personal Facebook pages of some councilors and the mayor, the city Facebook page, the CityLink channel, broadcast television, the city website, and local newspapers. The internet, social media, and the 24-hour news cycle have made the public accustomed to quick information and answers. Residents see a troublesome situation and wonder, "Why?" And then they question and complain on social media and local blogs. It's easy to conclude a municipal problem is due to inattention, indifference, or ineptitude. But I, and I believe other citizens, recognize that solutions take time. However, the timely acknowledgement that complaints have been heard reassures the public that our local government's attention is being focused on these issues. This is my first experience with this timer, and I think it's a brilliant addition to the council chamber. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Gene Heller. I'm Rhonda's husband, and I want to expand a little bit on what you said earlier. I would recommend to all of you to get on her Facebook page and watch that video that she made. She was perfectly within her rights to protest. She was in an area that was not part of the property of the business. She was in an area that was not part of the property of the business that she was protesting against. One of their people said that they had a witness that she came into the business. She did not, and that tape will show that. That business opened around 2014. At that time, it's a brand-new massage business, supposedly legitimate. My wife stopped in to see what they offered. She is a licensed massage therapist. She found out that there was no massage licenses issued to anybody on that premises. That is against the law. It is a misdemeanor. She explained to them what they needed to do to get their people licensed, gave them the telephone number of the board's executive secretary that they'd get in touch with. Apparently, they haven't. Over the years, there's been, I think, four arrests at that establishment. Three of the people have pled guilty to practicing without a license. The owner is presently waiting to go to court. She's been scheduled several times, hasn't shown up. One date last November, she didn't show up. Her attorney said that he couldn't get ahold of her. Within 30 minutes after she was supposed to be there, I walked into that business, and she was there, selling essential oils, quote-unquote. So, she was available. People seem to be playing the system. They're doing whatever they can to not comply. Law enforcement has been appraised of the situation. I realize that they have a limited number of personnel. They have other things that are much more important. But this is also an important issue. This is a public safety issue. Therapists are licensed for a reason, so that they know what they're doing, they know what contraindications are when they're working on a client.
Thank you, Gene.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Clark, next item, please.
Item 33, new 2019 Retail Wine Insider and new 2018/19 Retail Malt Beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine licenses, requesting off-sale use only for Dragon Asian Market, 2300 East 10th Street, Suite 101, CUP not required. Item 34, new 2019 Retail Wine Insider and new 2018/19 Retail Malt Beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine licenses for Lau Szechuan, 3101 West 41st Street, Suite 105, cup not required, pending final inspections per health. 35, new 2018/19 Retail Malt Beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License for Freedom Value Center, 2601 West 12th Street, with conditional use permit 9851-2019, being approved on February 6, 2019, pending final inspections per fire, health, and building services. Item 36, request to include video lottery terminals with the new 2018/19 Retail Malt Beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License for Freedom Value Center, 2601 West 12th Street, with conditional use permit 9851-2019, being approved on February 6, 2019, pending final inspections per fire, health, and building services. Item 37, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Augustana University, 2001 South Summit Avenue, for a fundraiser on March 29, 2019. Item 38, special one-day liquor license for Sioux Falls Jazz and Blue Society to be operated at Yankton Trail Park, 3901 South Minnesota Avenue, for Jazz Fest on July 19 through 20, 2019.
Hi, Jamie.
Hi, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions you may have on items 33 through 38.
Well, first off, is anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items? We just went through. Counselors, do you have questions for Jamie?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second.
All right. Move to approve, Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Counselor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jamie, I guess I'm curious, this will be an existing building, I'm sorry, for item 35 and 36 with the Freedom Value Center. How do they plan to have a separate space for the alcohol and video lottery in comparison to what they have now?
I'm going to have the applicant come up and speak to that item.
Good evening.
Hi, Mayor. My name's Sandeep Chunnara. My address is Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I have planning for the, inside the gas station, some space I have, so we will try to make in the separate doors, separate exit door, everything that I plan for make.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion, counsel, on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr.
I would move to amend by removing items 35 and 36.
Okay. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there is a second. Want to speak to that?
Yeah, I would. Just that, I think this is a big step at this location, and I'd like us to at least vote separately on it, rather than including it with the other ones that we don't have questions about, or that I don't have questions about.
All right. Okay. I'm going to call for a vote on that, then, please.
On the amendment, Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. So, now, we are back to the amended main motion, voting on items 33, 34, 37, and 38. Any discussion on those? All right. Let's take a vote on those, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. Those items pass eight to zero. So, now, we'll discuss items 35 and 36.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr.
I'd move to approve items 35 and 36.
Second, Erickson.
All right. Motion by Counselor Starr to approve those items, seconded by Counselor Erickson. Discussion on that? Counselor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we've looked at this type of issue in several neighborhoods, and I believe this is adjacent to a neighborhood, and it's an idea that I'm just not comfortable with. I'm going to be voting against approving these two items. I just don't think it's appropriate, and it won't in that neighborhood.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor. Any other discussion or input from the council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Counselor Staley.
Have we heard any discussion from neighbors about concerns about this?
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This specific conditional use went to the February Planning Commission meeting. Staff also thought that we would hear quite a bit from the neighborhood. We didn't have anybody come to the public hearing or any calls against the specific use here, so.
And how were they notified? Or how many?
We do the signs, we do the notice in the paper, and then, we have a 300-foot notification from the gas station property, so.
Thanks, Jason. Hang on, Jason. Counselor Nitzer?
I'll just point out for my part, this is fronting 12th Street. There's a lot of alcohol and video lottery on busy commercial corridors, and to say that this would be problematic would set quite a precedent for me, and I'm not going to do that. This is appropriate in my mind.
Thank you. Counselor Starr?
Jason, was there a separate public meeting, then, separate from the, did the applicant meet with the neighbors beforehand, outside of the Planning Commission meeting?
I don't believe that he'd had a separate neighborhood meeting at all. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. All right. I'm going to call for a vote on this item, please.
Councilmember Starr?
No.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. Those two items then pass seven to one. We'll move to item 39.
Item 39, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2018 International Building Code and amendments thereto.
Good evening, Butch.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. We're here for the adoption of the 2018 I-code. So, I gave the presentation last week. If you have any questions, I'll gladly answer them. This is on the existing building code, this first one.
All right. Butch, thank you. I'm going to ask if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item here? All right. Counselors, do you have questions for Butch on this?
Move to approve.
Second, Kylie. Okay. Move to approve, Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Discussion? All right. Let's vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 40, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2018 International Mechanical Code and the 2018 International Fuel/Gas Code and amendments thereto.
There again, this one that we went through last week. This is on the mechanical code, the fuel/gas code, which includes the natural gas appliances and ductwork and associated.
Any public input on this item? Counselor, do you have questions for Butch on this one?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay. Move to approve by Kylie and seconded by Sale. Any discussion? Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Item 41.
Item 41, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2018 International Building Code and amendments thereto.
This is the building code. This is what's used for all buildings, other than single-family and two-family homes and townhomes. So, any questions?
Anyone from the public to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Butch? All right. A motion, please.
Move to approve, Sale.
Second, Nitzer.
Okay. Move to approve by Sale and seconded by Nitzer. Any discussion? Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Item 43.
Item 43, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 156, Flood Plane Management Subchapter Administration.
This is a little housekeeping. It removes the chief planning and zoning official and inputs the chief building official.
Thanks, Butch. Anyone care to speak on this item from the public? Counselors, any questions for Butch?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie. All right. Move to approve by Erickson and seconded by Kylie. Any discussion? A vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Item 43.
Item 43, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 156, Flood Plane Management Subchapter Administration.
This is a little housekeeping. It removes the chief planning and zoning official and inputs the chief building official.
Thanks, Butch. Anyone care to speak on this item from the public? Counselors, questions?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Nitzer.
Okay. Move to approve by Erickson, seconded by Nitzer. Any discussion? All right. A vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 44, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising Chapter 150 Building Subchapter Building Security.
This is, again, a little housekeeping on this, and then, we added where we could have a visual monitoring system, so we're bringing everything up to today's technology.
All right. Thanks, Butch. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic? Counselors, questions for Butch? Motions to make?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie. Okay. Move to approve by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion? Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Item 46.
Item 46, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2018 International Building Code and the 2018 International Fuel/Gas Code and amendments thereto.
There again, this one that we went through last week. This is on the mechanical code, the fuel/gas code, which includes the natural gas appliances and ductwork and associated.
Okay. Any public input on this item? Counselor, do you have questions for Butch on this one?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay. Move to approve by Kylie and seconded by Sale. Any discussion? Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Item 42.
Item 42, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2018 International Building Code and amendments thereto.
This is a little housekeeping. It removes the chief planning and zoning official and inputs the chief building official.
Thanks, Butch.
fees the same.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic? Counselors, do you have any questions or motions on this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Staley.
So, Butch, what, like, what are we talking about here?
This one is, there was a couple of fees that were $10. We raised them to 20. There were some that, we had a master mechanic that we'd used to charge $100. That's back down to, we took that totally out. Now it's an inactive refrigeration mechanic, which is going to be $20. There was a renewal that was $50. We knocked that back down to $20, too.
Good news, thank you.
Any motions on this?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
Okay, motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion, counsel? Let's vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Passes eight to zero. Item forty-six.
Item forty-six, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising Chapter 150 Building/Subchapter Plumbing.
This is another little housekeeping, where we're going to make sure the plumbers call in for their inspections within 48 hours to keep the homeowner safe.
Thanks, Butch. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have any questions for Butch? Counselor Staley?
Now, I thought that was specifically hot water heaters, Butch.
It is for any appliances in the plumbing code, but it's typically, that's what the plumbers change out, is hot water heaters.
And I had a concern about that after our conversation on the first reading, so I did reach out to two different businesses that install hot water heaters, just to see, since you said you hadn't really gotten the buy-in from the plumbing association here. So, um, because I was thinking maybe 48 hours would give, uh, give a little more leeway, but they, they wanted me to make, to clarify that you're not talking that the inspection has to be done within 24 hours, or 48. You're saying that they have to call in.
That is correct.
And so your department might get out there two months from then, or I mean, right? It's whenever you're, you have ability to get.
When they call it in, if they so choose, it can be the next day. We have a 24-hour waiting period. If they call in on a Monday, we'll get out there on a Tuesday. But if the homeowner can't be in until the Friday, they're fine with that, but because the, they have called it in.
And how does that work if, because it is legal for a homeowner to put their own hot water heater in, correct?
This is correct.
So how do you handle that?
That's the same way. If they call in for their inspections on a Monday, they'll get it on a Tuesday.
Right, but the homeowner has 24 hours, or is it 24 or 48, did you say?
48 hours.
Okay, so does the, the homeowner has 48 hours to?
We're not as concerned about the homeowner as we are the contractors.
And if, if a contractor wouldn't get that called in within 48 hours, what's the penalty?
We can take them through the administration process, which can be a fine.
Okay, so there's not just a smack-on fine type of thing?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Butch on this? Look for a motion, please.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Knightzert.
All right, move to approve, Erickson, seconded by Knightzert. Any discussion? A vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item forty-seven?
Item forty-seven, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by repealing Subchapter Manufactured Housing of Chapter 150 Building.
There again, this is a little housekeeping.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, any questions or motions? Anyone want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion? A vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item forty-eight.
Item forty-eight, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising Chapter 150 Building/Subchapter Residential Building Contractors.
This one, again, is a lot of housekeeping.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Butch or motions to make on this?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, move to approve by Kylie, seconded by Sale. Any discussion? A vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Thank you, Butch. Item forty-nine.
Second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, establishing a portion of Elmwood Avenue as a one-way street.
Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Kurt Peppel, Public Works Engineering. The section of Elmwood Avenue is near West 26th Street and South Western Avenue, near the Lifescap campus. The ordinance, if approved, would allow for Elmwood to be a one-way northbound street between 26th and 28th Street and set the stage for a solution addressing the neighborhood parking concerns, as well as a safer drop-off and pickup scenario for Lifescap students. Along with this ordinance, item 58 tonight is a diagonal parking resolution, which would allow for diagonal parking along the west side of Elmwood Avenue. City staff held an open house on March 11th to discuss the proposed changes. Five residents attended. Engineering is not aware of any opposition to this proposal.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Kurt on this?
Move to approve.
Second, Starr. All right, move to approve by Kylie and seconded by Counselor Starr. Any discussion, counsel? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item fifty.
Item fifty, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the 2013 Shape Places zoning ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019.
Uh, good evening. This is our, usually about nine to every 12 months, we like to do some ordinance amendments to the Shape Places zoning ordinance that was adopted in 2014. These are the ones that I had specifically went through at the February Land Use Committee, so we'll quickly go through them here again. We're looking at doing some definition revisions and some additions, specifically with bed and breakfast. We're looking to update the definitions. We're aligning it with what the South Dakota Housing Division's lodging definitions are, maintain the community standard of an owner-occupied dwelling, where the owner has to live at the specific bed and breakfast establishment. Some of the other requirements that will be on there that have already been existing is, they have to have a minimum of 800 square foot of floor area in the entire house. Guest rooms may be located on any floor. I believe I spoke incorrectly at the land use meeting on that. You can have a guest room on any floor. It has to comply with the South Dakota Department of Health Lodging License for Smoke Detector in each sleeping room, and then they would, are required off-street parking requirements. It's one half-space per guest room. That's in addition to usually either one, or one or two spaces required for the house. We're looking at doing an update to the duplex definition. That's just really to, to keep the definition of a duplex and a twin home separate. Sometimes those get confusing. A twin home is actually where there is a property line down the middle, and you own one side or the other. A duplex would be lower and upper level units, so we're just trying to clarify that. We're looking to add a dance studio as a use in a recreation facility, therefore it can be used in the office district. We've had quite a few requests recently for some dance studios in office districts, so it seemed like similar to a recreation facility. And then we're also looking at adding a new definition of primary form. As you can see on our primary, our land use code definition thing that we send out to people, we already have primary form listed, and that's really the form that's usually utilized in each zoning district, so we thought, why not put a definition in the actual zoning ordinance? And that would be the form our form most commonly used and best represents the category of land uses on a parcel within a particular zoning district. Some of the form amendments we're looking at doing, some of the major ones, we're looking at adding accessory daycare centers and MD forms. We've really had a lot of requests for some of these after-school programs to actually put their after-school program within community rooms within apartments, and, and really the big push with that is for them to not have to go get the kids and bring them to their thing, but they can go to where the kids are, and it's been very successful with getting those people that live there to stay longer and, and stay out of trouble. We're looking at, at adding the AD4 form. Those are our converted houses and kind of the older part. You can allow up to eight units in a house to the RA1 zoning district. The specific reason for that is, we really do have a lot of these converted houses already zoned RA1. We are making the applicants and the owners rezone them to RT2, why not just allow it? And then, as I indicated, we're looking at moving the bed and breakfast standards, those ones that I had talked about before. Instead of having them in every single form, we're just moving them to the end of the conditional use standard section, and then allowing some spires, steeples, towers in the NF1 form to, to be higher than the 35-foot limit, and that's specifically for places of worship. We see a lot of those in NF1 form. And then also in the downtown area, to allow assisted living facilities as a permitted use. Currently, they had to be above the first floor. We're also looking at doing some proposed landscape changes. One of the major ones is to allow the option to screen drive-throughs from the public right-of-ways. Currently, you have to do a fence. We've been running into a lot of these new businesses that have been orientated their dri, or their drive-throughs towards, like, 12th Street and Louise. We didn't feel like a fence along those was the best option to screen those, so we're, we're allowing them to do ornamental trees, still provide the same thing, but not get that tunneling effect along our major arterials. Allowing more grouper, or grouped clusters of trees, but also maintains minimum separation distance, so they can be healthy and survive. Allow ornamental trees to count as 100% of the requirement under power lines. We've been running into the power companies just coming in and cutting down these deciduous shade trees, and it's not healthy for them, so just allow these ornamental trees underneath them, so we can keep them healthy. And then we really want to get into more diversity in our buffer yards. As you can see, this example here, this is what we would like with a buffer yard, not just all deciduous shade trees, not just all shrubs, but a little bit of both. And then also, we've been running into a lot of required landscape units and drainage, electrical or gas easements throughout the city. These applicants had to go to the Planning Commission to get an approval for what we call an alternative site plan. This way, we would just allow them to be done administratively and not make them jump through that hoop when they can't put them there anyways. And those are, are major amendments that we're looking at doing to this round of Shape Places.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items tonight?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I thought I heard him mention something about.
Say your name again, please.
Hello, my name is Cher Rosade. Sharon. I heard him mention something about owners, but I didn't see anything written up there. I wondered if he could clarify for the bed and breakfast.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? All right, counselor, do you have any questions for Jason on this? Counselor Staley?
Uh, first of all, a comment. Jason, thank you for clarifying that guest room and the bed and breakfast issue, because when we heard it proposed before, it was, Jason mentioned it was, had to be on the upper floor, or the second floor. So, this could be a ranch-style house, could be a bed and breakfast. And then, back to this duplex and twin home, again, you said that a duplex is an upper and lower unit? You don't have side-by-side duplexes?
Typically, they're upper and lower, there are two units on one lot, and when we get into twin homes, those are specifically, usually have firewalls down the middle that kind of separate them, so.
Well, like, on Western Avenue, those, all those, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, those are side, I guess those are somewhat side to side, I don't know where you're talking about. Those would be classified as duplex. What we're thinking about is those newer styles for twin homes, where you kind of have the garages that are together, and then the, the houses come out on the side, so.
So, so could we say a twin home is something that is owned and a duplex is rented? Would that be accurate? Because you said there's a property.
In, in most cases, yes, but you can own a, a twin home and then rent out both sides to somebody else. But yes, usually twin homes are owner-occupied. I could own unit A, and then you could say, you own unit B. A duplex traditionally is up and down, where it's one owner, and then you rent unit A or unit B. You can't have separate owners, because you can't put a property line going across.
Well, and just for the definition's sake, that's really not going to have any financial implications on anyone.
No, because they're both allowed in the same zoning districts. It's just more clarification for us, what we, what we code the land use as essentially, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Any other questions for Jason? Okay, look for a motion to set a date of second reading, or do you have a question?
I just have a statement, if I can. I just want to make reference to the daycare, daycare center adjustment that's being made on there over the last year, and I know you guys have been working on this. This has been a big thing for some of the nonprofits that serve some of our youth in our community, and so this is going to be a great asset for them to be able to go into the neighborhoods and, you know, stealing your words, stay where they're at. It's, it's a huge benefit, and so there are several nonprofits that do intend to do that, that I know that you've worked with, and so I think that's exciting to be able to take them to our, our youth that, that may need some extra attention, so I appreciate that. With that, I'll make a, a motion for, set the date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2nd.
Second.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Further discussion, counsel? Let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 51.
Item 51. An ordinance of the, second, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located north of East 41st Street, south of East 33rd Street, east of Veterans Parkway, and west of South Faith Avenue, from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential, suburban RD2 Townhome Residential, suburban RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density RA3 Apartment Residential High Density LW Live Work C2 Commercial, Neighborhood and Street Car C3 Commercial, Community and CN Conservation Districts, petition number 9853-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero with the following condition, that the LW Live Work zone parcels, as shown by exhibit, allow development at the following forms, AD1, AD2, AD3, MD1, NF1, NF2, UT1, UT2, RE1 forms. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019.
Uh, the applicant here is Perry Cole. The owner is the Burns family. It's located at the northeast corner of Veterans Parkway and East 41st Street, and then just south of East 33rd Street. It's about 105.44 acres in size. The proposal here is, the developers are looking to market the land for future commercial office apartments, townhomes, twin homes, and single-family uses. At, at the Planning Commission meeting, that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this plan with those conditions that Tom laid out. This was their original submittal plan. Since that time, staff did meet with the neighbors last Thursday on the 14th. I believe there were four neighbors there, along with four city council members. We listened to their concerns. It was a very productive meeting. Most of their concerns were the two parcels, specifically the C2 and the Live Work that front 33rd Street and Veterans Parkway. They had concerns about the uses that could be allowed on those. They made some suggestions on what possibly would, they could change, that would make it maybe fit in better with their existing single-family residential neighborhood. Those concerns were sent to the applicant. The applicant has agreed to adjust their plan to this specific new plan, which addresses some of those commercial, or those uses along 33rd Street. some of those commercial, or those uses along 33rd Street. Specifically, they would turn that C2 into Live Work that would allow office and apartments now instead of retail. And then that Live Work portion where they were concerned about apartments or offices right next to single-family, they are looking at taking that down to the RD2 zoning district, and that would allow townhomes, which should provide the better transition from those existing single-family houses of the Copper Creek Development to this proposed development here on the Burns's property.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Heather Powell, I am a resident on 33rd Street. I just wanted to come and say thank you to the council members who were able to come and meet with us last Thursday for Jason and Albert. Very productive conversation, we really felt like we were heard, and thank you for further explanation on very complicated things. We'd also like to thank the Burns family for accepting our proposal of change, I think that's just a great example of how when we can come together and actually meet about it before it's proposed, or even after, in this case, that we're able to find solutions. So, thank you, and I think on behalf of the Copper Creek residents, we are good with this moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for staff? You have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Are you going to need anything procedurally such as a remand or anything, or is, or are we going to be okay with this exhibit to move forward?
I've sent a communication over to Danny Brown today, I haven't heard back from him, so hopefully in the next week or two, we'll work through that and figure out if we need to remand it, or if the planning commission, you know, that was something that the neighborhood asked, so we can see if they considered that RD2 and Live Work, and if we can just move forward here.
So, for the time being, you just like a motion to move it to second reading, and we can always make a change at second reading?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
You have other questions for Jason?
Yes, I have a question.
Counselor Staley?
And I was, I was at that meeting, and I was, I was invited by one of the residents there. How did that meeting come about?
Well, specifically after the planning commission meeting, I know my colleague Albert met with some of the neighbors outside and kind of went through, you know, the next step in this, gave him his card, gave him his card if they had any questions to communicate with him. They specifically emailed and asked if they could meet with us, and that was something that we'd be happy to do. So, that's, that's kind of how it started.
Well, because, yeah, this has really got a happy ending, and I know Counselor Nitzer was there and Kylie, and, I mean, bringing people together in the front end of something, and you had the council input, and Counselor Brecky wandered over, I mean, that, I think we need to see more of that happening, because those people were heard, and it didn't create that big divide about the developer opposed to the, to the homeowner. And, and it was neat to see these citizens, they had PowerPoints, and, I mean, they were, they were, they had finesse, they had the intelligence to put things together. Well, and a lot, some people may not have that, but I think we need to offer that, that opportunity to be heard to everybody. So, that's a nice piece of this whole process that I think, I'm hoping we can see more of that happening.
Absolutely, and we're, we're looking at, we love to meet with anybody that we can, and just want to say thank you to the neighbors, they came in with not a chip on their shoulder, they listened, they voiced their concerns, a lot of their concerns were valid, and something now that we have a better product, hopefully in the end, so.
Thanks, Jason. Counselor Starr? Thank you. I guess, Jason, the only, this is a success story, I guess my only concern is, is that maybe this meeting should have happened before the planning commission approved, because now we're going to delay their preliminary plan, aren't we, if we do end up having to remand back to, to planning? I mean, wouldn't it have made more sense for the, the applicant to have met with the neighborhood before they come to the planning commission and moved it on?
Yep, absolutely, and we always suggest they do a neighborhood meeting for these specific rezonings, so.
But when I watched the planning commission meeting, the applicant looked kind of surprised that they would have had to had a, a meeting with the neighborhood, and I don't know how we get that message to them beforehand, they're working with an engineering firm, they're working through the process, and I don't know how that slipped through without, you know, like I said, I don't want to delay their plan, and we may unfortunately end up doing that at second reading, so. It's the only downside of a really good result. Any other questions for Jason? Is there a motion to make?
Move to approve, Brecky.
Second, Kylie.
All right, move to approve by Counselor Brecky, seconded by Kylie. Any further discussion, Counselor Kylie?
I would just like to also acknowledge the work that the citizens did on this, the residents in this particular area. Thank the landowner, developer, for their willingness to, to work with the neighborhood. Also want to thank Jason Bieber, and Albert Schmidt, and Director Mike Cooper for taking time out to meet with several of us prior to the meeting to bring us all up to speed on it, and then meet again with the neighborhood. So, it, it was a good group effort.
All right.
And Mr. Mayor, if I just may say, and I know, this, this was in Counselor Kylie's district, and once again, I would hope our standard is that every, no matter whose district it is, that everybody gets that same representation, that we can have, you know, we're willing to reach out, have those extra meetings, you know, it shouldn't just be because you've got a particular area of town that gets that, that extra attention. So, this is a great thing for everybody.
Right, there's a, a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2, 2019, and a second by Counselor Kylie, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Elberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, item 52.
First reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the southwest corner of South Ellis Road and West 22nd Street, from the AG Agriculture District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and O Office Districts, number 9886-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019.
The applicant owner here is Kelly Nielsen, this is located at the southwest corner of the Ellis Road and West 22nd Street, a parcel that was recently annexed into the city. It's about 22 and a half acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at doing kind of an office lot on Ellis and 22nd, and then the rest of the 22 and a half acres will be a single-family residential.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Jason on this one?
Move to approve.
Sec.
Erickson.
Erickson, you got it. All right, I have a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2, by Kylie, seconded by Counselor Erickson. Other discussion on this? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Elberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero, item 53.
Item 53, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 6400 East 41st Street, from the AG Agriculture District to the S1 General Institutional and REC Recreation Districts, number 9934-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019.
The applicant here is Jeffrey Kreider, representing the Sioux Falls School District. This one is located just southeast of the Burns property that we just saw on 41st and Faith Avenue. It's about 23.1 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing the new Sioux Falls Middle School on the site.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason or motions to make here?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2, 2019, by Kylie and seconded by Sale. Any discussion? Counselor Kylie?
Just really looking forward to a middle school over on the east side of town, it's going to be a great addition.
For sure. All right, let's take a vote on this, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Elberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero, next item.
Item 54, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 3920 South Hawthorne, Hawthorne Avenue, from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the O Office District, number 9928-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019.
The applicant here is Arthur Crease with the Dance Gallery of South Dakota, the owner is the Northwest District of Wesleyan Church. It's located north of West 47th Street and just east of Western Avenue. It's about 1.62 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is that the dance studio is looking at moving to this location and constructing a new building with a parking lot.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason on this topic? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
You got it, Counselor Sale, seconded by Erickson, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2, 2019. Any discussion, council? All right, a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Elberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero, item 55.
Item 55, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the southeast corner of West 85th Street and Southwestern Avenue, from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District, petition number 9932-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019.
The applicant is Michael Gillick, McGillic, excuse me, with Essex Companies. The owner is Ronnie. It's located at the southeast corner of Southwestern Avenue and West 85th Street, it's about 4.6 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a new three-story senior apartment building, in two phases, phase one would be the south portion of the lot, and then a smaller phase two. We did hear concerns from the neighbors prior to the planning commission meeting, specifically about parking on West 87th Street, they were concerned that some of the residents would be parking on their street. We didn't have anybody that actually came to the planning commission meeting to voice their concerns, but they are proposing roughly 130 below-ground parking spaces, which is over one per unit that they're going to construct, and then 90 above-ground parking spaces. So, they're actually got about two and a half times the parking than they're actually required, so we shouldn't have an issue with anybody parking on that West 87th Street. And they will be required that level seat buffer yard along the east portion, adjacent to those existing single-family homes. That will include a 30-foot setback, four-foot berm or six-foot fence, and the 40 units of landscaping for every 100 lineal feet.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic this evening? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason on this item?
Move to set the date of second reading to Tuesday, April 2nd.
Second.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Sale on that. Discussion? Take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Elberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, item 56.
First reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 160, zoning to modify the buffer yard requirements in the form MD2 Multiple Dwelling Medium. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019.
Counselor Nitzer? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proposal I'm bringing forward would increase the setback in buffer yard requirements for three-story apartments next to lower-density uses like single-family homes. I'm going to give you an overview of this proposal, and I'll go into more detail at second reading, should we make it to that point. We need to encourage all types of housing, that includes multifamily housing, this is not an anti-apartment ordinance, in fact, I've supported multiple controversial rezoning applications because I felt it was the right thing to do. However, we need to make sure our zoning ordinance accurately reflects the values and expectations of our citizens. When three-story apartments are proposed next to lower-density uses, particularly single-family homes, it creates quite a bit of concern because of the height, mass, and scale. Here's an example of an MD2 form, which is a medium-density apartment, just so you can visualize what we are talking about. The MD2 form is the issue. First of all, what is a form? A form in the zoning ordinance is simply a building, its dimensions and placement on the property, otherwise known as the bulk regulations, and its use. The MD2 form is a building of up to three stories in height with 48 living units, that's the bulk regulations, and its use, which is an apartment building providing living units for renters. So, that's an MD2 form, the 48-unit building of up to three stories. The MD2 form can be two or three stories in height, but regardless of whether it's two or three stories, its required setback to single-family homes is only 15 feet. That just doesn't feel right to citizens because of that mass scale and height. It also isn't consistent with how we treat other three-story uses in the zoning ordinance when they're next to single-family uses. It would not affect other developments where there is a street in between or a higher-density uses next to the proposed apartment. I'm proposing a narrowly tailored solution. Unintended consequences are the enemy when writing any legislation, and it's particularly true in the zoning ordinance. If the change is too broad, it affects projects that have no controversy and will make projects unfeasible because of site or cost constraints, which is the last thing that we want to do. Put quite simply, my proposal is to increase the required buffer yard and setback for apartments when two conditions are met. Number one, the apartment is three stories in height, and the lower-density use is touching the apartment property, not simply across the street. Both conditions would have to be met for the increased setback in buffer yard to kick in. This narrowly tailored provision is aimed at addressing infill situations and those where we're putting three-story apartments right next to lower-density uses. I gathered input from a number of stakeholders which shaped my final proposal, I'll expand on that more should it make it to a second reading. I analyzed all of the apartment rezoning proposals from 2014 when shaped places became effective to the present to see how it would affect projects, both the controversial and the non-controversial. My proposal puts our code more in line with what developers are already doing in new developments, and puts us more in line with the conditions we've been adding to infill situations when there is controversy. Projects will still work. At the second reading, should we get there, I'm going to need a small amendment to remove the one section where I'm changing a word "reviewed" to "approved." City planning staff in their ordinance, which they spoke about just a little bit ago, also amended that section, and we don't need to do it twice, and they would be in conflict. That doesn't make a meaningful change to my ordinance, so it's more appropriate that we remove that, so I'll bring that amendment at a second reading. In summary, I believe this amendment will make three-story apartments more closely aligned with the rules that we have for other three-story structures when they're next to lower-density uses like single-family, it addresses a concern citizens are bringing us, and it will more closely match conditions where we're already adding in infill situations. If I've had any concern raised, it's that we're not doing enough. There's, there are some who think it should be more, or that apartments should never be allowed next to single-family. I honor those viewpoints, but I believe both are untenable for a variety of reasons. This is an attempt to address a concern without creating unintended consequences. Remember, we can always add more conditions, including adding additional setback for the high-profile cases. We cannot, however, waive regulations in the ordinance if no one objects. That's why we have to be very careful about going too far. Thank you for your time, I'd appreciate you moving to this to a second reading, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, should there be any.
Thank you, Counselor Nitzer. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, do you have, well, let's move into a discussion. Can I get a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2nd?
So moved, Nitzer.
Second, Erickson.
All right, move by Nitzer, seconded by Erickson. Discussion, council?
A question for you, Counselor Nitzer, you said you had dialogue with the citizens and with the multi-housing community, can you just, you know, brief us on what their thoughts were on it?
Sure, I can bring a list to second reading, but I did meet with somewhere around half a dozen multifamily builders who had various input. It was everywhere from totally support it, it's what we do anyway, to don't change anything, to be really careful, and in fact, what I had initially was more broad, and they showed me examples where it made sense, where it would make projects that, that wouldn't pencil out anymore, or they were in areas that nobody was, had a problem with it, where my change would have been more broad, would have affected all apartments, and so I narrowed that in. And then, on the neighbor's side of it, as you would imagine, it's all over the board. It's everywhere from, I love it, thank you for bringing this forward, to it's not enough, to apartments should never be next to single-family. So, obvious, you know, so, I think this meets in the middle, and, and, and I tried to reach out to one or two from the higher-profile cases, and the people that I had interacted a lot with during those rezoning applications that we saw, and that's where I got, got that input. So, that included like Sixth and Bonson, and 85th and Brett, and, and the recent one at the Assembly of God, primarily.
Thank you. I've got a question for someone from the planning officer, planning zoning office, yeah, Just fill me in on, you know, how often we do have three-story residences, or three-story apartment complexes put up near residential, and is that usually an infill situation? Do we allow that readily now when we're not in an infill situation? I'm still trying to understand, you know, I'm still, you know, you know, back in the time of transitional buffer zoning, and that really didn't happen, when we were doing that, when we, that we were, when we're doing buffer zoning, you usually didn't end up with residences next to apartment complexes. So, I'm just trying to learn and, and be brought into the loop about, you know, how and why that philosophy has changed.
Sure. Typically, the ones that Counselmember Nitzer spoke about, Sixth and Bonson, 85th and Brett, the Assembly of God, we are, we are having, there's a vacant parcel on Suratoma in about 18th Street that's already zoned for that, so they're going to be constructing some three-story apartments there. Typically, those three-story apartments, all those, all of those specific cases have one thing in common, they're always on arterials and collectors, so typically, that's why you see three-story apartments on those. We don't typically see the infill, I guess, or rezonings, that's not an arterial or collector for three-story apartments, those all are on arterials or collectors, so. So, we see it throughout the city, because there's already quite a few parcels on Live Work that they can just build it right now, and typically, as Counselmember Nitzer said, their site plans already indicate over 30 feet of setback from the houses, so his proposed amendment, they're already doing most of that, there's just some cases where it would be required a little bit extra for some of these single-family homes for a little bit more protection, so.
So, in those situations, they would already be zoned, and the houses that were built would know that when they were building it, that it was already zoned for multiple.
Yep, the one I spoke of on Suratoma has houses to the west and to the south already single-family, that parcel's been zoned that since, you know, early 2000s, probably earlier than that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, council? All right, let's take a vote on the motion that's on the floor, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Elberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight, zero, item 57.
Item 57, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing provisional supplemental appropriations for pothole remediation, $500,000. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019.
Counselor Staley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a very fast-moving week, many events happening. The pothole issue has been huge. I'm, I'm hearing from citizens, I know my colleagues are as well, it, and until we, this last week, when we had the, the weather compounding the whole intensity of our community, I'm hearing from people, and it came to me as a leader within this council that, what can we do to step forward to help with the issue? So, I've, I've gone through a few of the explanations as to why I proposed a supplemental appropriation, and Counselor Starr also seconded this. First of all, it's within our council authority to do that. Charter Section 5.07, amendments after adoption, supplemental appropriations, and, and I personally, on a personal note here, I think that our council has the ability to do so much more than we do, and if we, we may have that within the charter, and if we don't grab onto it and, and use it when it can help our citizens, then I don't think we're doing our jobs fully here. So, it says if during the fiscal year, the mayor certifies that there are available for appropriation revenues in excess of those estimated in the budget, which we've had happen, or a sufficient fund balance, the city council by ordinance may make supplemental appropriations for the year up to the amount of such excess. So, that's the first thing. Why a supplemental appropriation? Past practice. We had, the mayor asked for a million dollars to help with, within the street fund, so the ordinance that I've proposed is not an unheard-of piece of legislation. Supplemental appropriation, we have the money, and I'd like to ask Sean Pritchard to come up, our finance director, and just give us a real brief recap of the money that we do a real brief recap of the money that we do have available.
I'll just hearken back to our informational meeting from March 5th. You can refer to certain pages if you have those numbers available, but on page one, we had talked about, I think you were referring to the general fund, where I noted to the council that we did have revenues in excess of expenses for 2018 of about approximately $5 million that has been added, so about $5.3 million has been added to the reserves, or I guess the available balance for the general fund. Just keeping in mind that it's the council's policy to maintain that available balance at 25% at all times for potential future use, and just as a, to avoid future downturns. And right now, based on the 2019 budget amounts, we're at about 31.4%.
Thank you, okay. Why a supplemental appropriation? Another thing that came to me, and again, in the midst of, before that we actually had the flooding thing hit, is that I saw, and the mayor, I'm sharing this because you're, he's sharing this publicly on his Facebook page, but he put out a little shout-out, and I certainly would agree with the affirmation he's giving to our employees, "Sioux Falls, I need some number-one Sioux Falls help. As you know, we are in the midst of a very challenging stretch of weather, weeks of below freezing temps with no melting, lots of snowpack, and this past weekend rain. Simply put, our street crews are tapped. These folks are working unbelievable hours right now to keep our streets and drains clear. If you are as appreciative of them as I am, please consider bringing them some donuts or a treat to express your thanks." And then also, he says, "sending them a card of note of appreciation. They occasionally hear from upset citizens, but I know there are thousands of you who appreciate their work. Let's show them." And from the response on his Facebook page, there's maybe several thousand who have responded to affirm that. So, but I'm seeing this, we have, our employees are stretched, so we have that issue. Next slide. And, but, so we have the employee issue, and this has been happening for the whole winter, and then, we've got the citizen feedback. And I've copied a few things, I'm hearing from tons of citizens on Facebook, getting emails from people. One person, this was out there, and this really struck me. Are you saying, she said, Teresa, "Are you saying this is citizens' responsibility to notify the city of every single pothole in Sioux Falls? There are thousands of severe and dangerous potholes in the streets, not just one here and there. Should I get out and measure it as well after I drive into it? My wheel flies off my car, and I'm spending hundreds of dollars on tires, rims, shocks, balance, and alignment, like a lot of people are having to do. Seems like there are thousands of city workers that drive the streets daily, just as us citizens do, that can make note of the most significant ones as well. I've lived here over 15 years and have never seen road conditions like this before." And then make it seem like us citizens are the ones expected to take our time and report them all, not to mention paying a wheel tax every year. What's that for, again? Oh, but wait, how am I, how about I submit them all on the apps as I'm driving down the road, so I don't forget their exact locations? Ridiculous. Now, we have, we have apps, I've been putting the pothole hotline number out there, but people, this is just showing you that there's a level of frustration growing. People are damaging their cars. I'm getting pictures of body damage, blown-out tires, and I mean, we're talking about people's safety, their personal property, not to mention the reputation of our community as you're driving through these whole, these streets that look like they've been blown up. Okay, next slide. Another rant that was put on this rant and rave page. Beware of huge potholes east on 33rd Street, there is a very big one just east of Western Avenue. It will be the tires, rims on the right side of your vehicle that will be affected. Two more eastbound on 33rd of Minnesota. These are safety issues that should be fixed immediately today. Anyone riding a motorcycle or bicycle would be seriously injured or killed." And they, they had my name on that. So I'm hearing that, and citizen feedback, this one was on Facebook, and I, you know, I've been thinking about, and I brought this forward, and I want to say, I appreciate that the mayor has, in the last few days, they've started doing pothole filling in a very intense way, even though I had been told you can't do it until it thaws out, but we're doing it. We're trying to do something to fill those holes in. But people pay their taxes, and they're starting to say, "What the heck am I getting for my taxes?" You know, all people really want, many people, is just to have their basic services provided for, and a road to drive on. "Would you kindly fix the road? I was already taxed to fix, so I'm not causing damage to the car. I am taxed annually to drive, which I purchased with the income you already taxed, which sits in the driveway of my home that is highly taxed." So, why appropriation? Because I felt it was an action that we could take to just step up and say, "This is important. Our workers are taxed, maybe we can get some of those work release inmates that are helping us fill sandbags, they can help to fill the potholes." Getting the conversation moving, I suspect this isn't going to go to a second, see the light of day at a second reading, and that's okay, because we brought the issue up, and I want the citizens to know that I heard them, Counselor Starr heard them, I know the rest of you are hearing from them, and that, you know, we're trying to be responsive and to take some action. So hopefully, well, I know the city, I read on Facebook, which I'm getting a lot of my city news unfortunately from Facebook, or Kello News, but I saw there that we're going to try to have the potholes patched by the end of April. So if this doesn't pass, I still think that it was really a good effort. Now, the council will see on here that I have something about sandbags, and this is just, I was going to have an amendment for sandbags. Last Thursday, I saw on the paper that our City of Sioux Falls said, "We've got the sandbags covered for our lift stations, but there are no extra sandbags for the citizens." And I didn't think much of it, until I started getting contacted frantically by people saying, "Teresa, where are, where can we get sandbags?" I put it on Facebook, "Does anyone know where we can get sandbags?" And then somebody said, "Canton, South Dakota, has sandbags." And I called the emergency manager, at 9:30 at night, I tracked him down in Canton, and I said, "Is that true?" He said, "We had a tri-state ready-mix donated the sand, we had the high school kids filling thousands of bags, and yes, indeed, we did have people from Sioux Falls driving here to get sandbags." I said, "Can we, can I put that on Facebook, that we can encourage people to go get them?" And he said, "Teresa, I don't think we can handle Sioux Falls." So, so I didn't do it. So it was, it's kind of a sad thing, at that point, people, we had no resources. So I was going to put it down to say, "Let's use some of the money for sandbags." However, I just saw today, later this day, that we have now opened our own sandbag center, which is fabulous, that we can do that for our citizens. 25 sandbags a person, they're free, over at Sherman Park, so that's a great thing. So, again, I just wanted to bring this up, to take action on it. I'm really glad that the city's already kind of picking up the ball on it.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Stephen Ciano, I've worked with drywall before, and I recommend that if potholes are a problem, you could use something solid and anchor it with a screw, because you don't put too much mud in too large a space with dealing with drywall, so you could take some from another trade as a suggestion. Also, the scraping of these plows across the, well, sparking the road, I believe, is much the cause of these potholes, and maybe you could use brushes instead of these heavy-steel plows radical up against it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Good evening.
Hi, John Mathias, Sioux Falls. I'd like to share some words with you that were authored by a Midwest journalist, and they were actually published outside of the Sioux Falls area. Our pothole horrors demand strong action by the city. Our elected leaders not only need to make street repairs a higher priority, they also need to take a close look at current procedures and determine how to implement a more effective and timely repair policy. Some major arteries in our street, in our city, look as if they've suffered artillery bombardment. To look at some of our older streets, one would think some neighborhoods have endured mortar assaults. Navigating our streets has become a nerve-wracking endurance test for drivers and a traumatic experience for vehicle suspensions and tires. If city residents are exasperated, what impression do the current street conditions likely convey to out-of-town visitors? No question, it's been a brutal winter. No question either that the city's public work crews are dedicated, work hard, and face an enormous task. The issue isn't that a city should have no potholes in winter, it's that Midwestern cities have an obligation to prepare adequately, so they don't tumble into a pothole crisis of the magnitude we are now experiencing. City leaders must step up to this challenge, examine and revise policies as needed, learn how other Midwestern cities cope more successfully with this issue, build consensus on a sound strategy to move forward. Yes, we will always have potholes, but the city should take strong action, so that in the years to come, we see no repeats of the current embarrassment. This was published in the Omaha World-Herald, and I simply took out seven references to the city of Omaha. But I think many would agree that these words are relevant to our situation in Sioux Falls. This could be regarded as a reason to discount the pothole issue. We could say, "See, it's not just us, this happens in other northern cities, too." However, my hope is that the City of Sioux Falls can take this as a challenge to be a leader in pothole mitigation for winter seasons in the future. This appropriation that is before you tonight is a step in that direction. The ordinance has merit and deserves support to move to a second reading. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right. Do you want to make a motion, or do you want to?
I have a question for Sean.
Question for Sean. All right, question for staff. We'll start with Sean. Come on up, sir. Counselor Erickson.
Director Pritchard, I'm sorry. My question, as you're coming up, I'd like to know how far we're into our street maintenance budget, and then also if you could comment a little bit on the available fund and the sales tax for CIP projects, and a potential plan for that.
Sure. So in regard to where we're at with the street maintenance budget, so we're about 8% into that budget, and that was through about middle of March. That's about typical with where we've been in the prior year. So we've just, we have a long year to go yet, but we've just begun expending those funds, so funding really hasn't been an issue in terms of dealing with the pothole issue, and I think Mark Cotter, who I saw, Director Cotter, just joined us, but he could speak to some of the issues that they had in trying to get out in advance of this, and primarily dealing with the weather, and he can talk more eloquently than I can in regard to that. But the funding situation isn't necessarily, the funding is there. In fact, we actually came in under expense last year, which covered the snow removal overage that we had, so there has been funding available for the project, for dealing with these issues.
Thank you, thank you for answering that. And the reason why I bring that up is it's not a funding issue, it's a weather issue. If we, as a council, want to refer back to the director's meeting notes that we were, we received on February 9th, it goes into great detail about why we are where we are. We all want our potholes filled yesterday, but right now, we are in an extreme danger of the weather that happens to take precedent right now. They are filling as they can, we've heard a plan has been released. I was listening to Greg Belfridge, I don't usually quote the media very often from the dais, but I was listening to Belfridge last week, and on Fridays, he has a "What's Your Beef?" I think it's recorded, I would encourage you to listen to it, and during that time, he talked a lot about, sure, we'd all like our potholes filled yesterday, we would, but we have people that are losing their life savings in their home vehicles. I watched the news this morning about a gentleman who lost his motorcycle, and so for us to rally around the community and make sure that we're protecting those assets, I think is far more important at this time. We will continue to fish, fix the roads, we're 8% in. If you look at the plan and the press release, or the media release that was done last week, they're working around the clock, and by tapped, I don't think that tapped means that they've tapped out and they're not working, it means they are working overtime, they're working hard. We've heard that they're using DOC folks as well to start helping in other ways that we can, but we need to be mindful of this flood that is coming, and the water that is coming, and really be mindful that that is taking precedent right now. These roads will get fixed, it's the number-one thing, every single year it is, and we all support that, and I know that this mayor and this administration also supports that.
Counselor Selberg?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask kind of a similar question, but I think the answer that we've gotten before is basically the funding part, we seem okay there. Would that be safe to say?
That's correct. And then, there was a second part to Counselor Erickson's question, I guess I didn't answer necessarily, but in regard to the CIP portion, so there's the general fund, that's the operating portion of the budget, but we also have the CIP portion, as was discussed with the council at our informational meeting a couple of weeks ago. We did add $4.6 million to available balance as part of that, and I know that highways and streets and Public Works is coming up with a list of projects that will be part of the request that may be coming back to council for additional funding as well, and I believe, taking into consideration even the events of the last couple of weeks, not just the issues with the streets and the potholes from over the winter, but also the situation with the flooding and so forth that we've dealt with over the last week that will contribute to how they prioritize those requests.
Okay. Could I ask Director Cotter a question?
Sure.
Evening, Counsel. Mark Cotter, Public Works.
Can you maybe, for everybody's benefit here and at home, just give us a quick schooling again, remind us, pothole fixing. What do the temperatures have to be? Why is there a certain time they can't be filled? Why are we are where we are?
Certainly. So, we patch potholes year-round. Through the cold months, really from probably mid-November till May 1st, the commercial asphalt plants are closed. So what we rely on in those cold months is cold mixes, so either an aquafall, or UPM, or some of those methods, and essentially, you know, the cold mixes don't bond as well as the hot mixes. And so, we do put a robust capital program together each year, that's why our overall condition index scores came back at a 70, you know, marked above our peer cities. But we know that it's been a rough winter, I mean, there's no question about it, and it really started with a really wet 2018, one of our wettest seasons on record, and so when you load up that ground, and then we start to go into our normal freestyle, we're just having, you know, we're having a lot of road issues because of the fact, because of the elements. But it hasn't been a funding issue, it's been a weather issue. We're running six days, six crews, Monday through Friday, we're running three crews on the weekends, and one at night. So we've got a lot of effort going toward it, and every day, the ice melts, snow melts, and the temperatures are improving, and so as the temperatures improve, our retention of those temporary materials will even improve as well. So just ask for everyone's patience, we're putting a lot of effort into it alongside for the next really two weeks with this flood fight, and we'll get through the potholes, and we'll also get through this flood fight as well.
I mean, this is the time here when you send these crews out, you can start using this hot fill.
Not until May 1st.
Okay, takes that long, okay.
It will be May 1st until there's adequate, the key is, is that, these are big plants, and so they can't just start for, you know, our usage. They've got to have all the, some roads ready to pave, they've got to have commercial parking lots ready to pave, so you can actually start these plants and keep them running throughout the course of the day. But that's when we, when we pull under the chutes and we get 300-degree material, it's much better situation for us.
Okay, thank you. I would just add real quickly, while I've got a second, I mean, I think the pothole hotline and that, and this new app is terrific, and I sure hope that folks out there aren't thinking that we're asking citizens to take on all the responsibility to find every pothole. I think we all just kind of, if we see one, call one in, I'm getting better at it, but hopefully, we're all pitching in. But that app and that phone, I think, really add to it, so hopefully, people are using it as a tool and not getting too frustrated and things like that, all those little things will help, so, thank you.
If I can just add one more thing, just from a production standpoint, I know people always ask, "How many potholes do you fill in a day?" We talk more about tonnage, and so each crew basically fills about three tons per day, and with six crews, that's almost 20 tons of material that's going into the streets, and so that's really like two large dump trucks, and so you can imagine, all that's coming from shovelfuls. Over time, if we can get a break from the weather, we're going to make substantial progress in a short time. So, again, just ask for your patience, but the volume of work is there, we just got to have a little bit more forgiving weather, and you'll see a drastic improvement.
Thanks. Counselor Sale, first?
I have a question for Counselor Staley. Prior to your news conference last week, could you identify the experts in road construction that you sought before you made this proposal?
What I did is, the experts that I'm talking about are the citizens driving on the streets. And when you're hearing from people that there are problems, and you're giving $500,000 to our city, when the mayor's saying that our city staff is tapped, and I think we need extra help to carry the load, that's what I wanted to do, to help. It is, it's totally within my authority and yours to work to allocate extra money, to say, "Use that $500,000 to hire some extra staff to help." And guess what? As a result of that whole thing, the whole thing's been jump-started. We've got staff, an energy of staffing that we didn't see before, happening this week. We're doing, we're doing pothole almost around the clock, filling potholes. People were all filling potholes last Thursday when it was raining. So, so you hear something from the citizens and you act. So, no, I didn't, I didn't ask an expert about it, I didn't have to, I'm hearing from the citizens. And I'm putting the money back in to say to our city staff, "Use that to help," so that we don't have people working overtime, so that they're not being stretched to the point of needing us to give them thank-you notes.
Did the staff, city staff, ask for more money?
They didn't have to. I saw that they were, apparently, they're being overwhelmed and exhausted. So sometimes you don't, you can see it for yourself, and I'm hearing, maybe you're not hearing from citizens, Counselor Sale, that our streets are in bad, bad shape. I'm hearing it loud and clear.
Counselor Brecky?
You're not hearing it from the citizens?
Counselor Brecky, I'm going to give the floor to Counselor Brecky, please.
I was just going to ask Mark another question, sorry. He sat back down.
I was just gonna ask Mark another question. Sorry, he sat back down. You know, have we ever contracted out when we're overwhelmed like this, when we have it so bad? I mean, this has been extraordinary. I mean, it's like swallows up a Volkswagen. These potholes are so big. Have we ever, you know, tried to, you know, I guess, contract, you know, get get some contracted services in order to make it happen faster?
We haven't, because we've got, we essentially have the tools. We've invested in the, in the, you know, hot boxes. We've invested in the trucks. And it begins our, you know, it's our top priority. And again, we've been, we've been patching potholes all winter long, but it's been just such an active winter. And so every spring, we scale up in the number of crews. And I just thought it would be helpful last week to just communicate how we accomplish that during the week, on the weekends and nights. Nights, the night activity is one thing we've always held in those real intense intersections. There's a lot, it's just not safe for the teams to be out there during the day. And so that's when we bring in that night crew. So that's been our mode of operandi. And, you know, we've also recognized with the, we had such a wet 2018, it's put additional tax on our roads. And so that's where, that's why we've got such a massive effort going.
And just one additional question, because I don't think anybody here would disagree, but this has just been an extraordinary year. I've never seen anything like it. Nobody's ever seen anything like it, the flooding. And that's why I I wonder, I mean, if this isn't, you know, isn't, we have dual priorities, trying to deal with the flooding and deal with the the pothole patching. If there was a contractor out there that could take over those services, maybe this would be that once, once-in-a-lifetime deal that we did that.
I can appreciate that, Counselor. We are looking at some of the activities on the flood fight to outsource, if possible. And so that's where, you know, we're staying in our lane. We're a street maintenance operation. And so we don't normally fight floods very often. And so if there's certain key lanes that we can outsource to local contractors, that's probably a better fit for them. And so we're looking at that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Nitzer.
You know, I was maybe gonna leave this alone, but it, because a lot of what I maybe would have said was said. But I don't know if anybody else heard what what I heard a few minutes ago, but it was essentially insinuated that Public Works didn't pay attention to potholes until last week, and that it took a press conference to get them to start filling potholes. What also happened last week is the temperature started to rise. So I, I just, I just, it, it's just offensive, the idea that Public Works was just, didn't care about potholes, and they found religion last week because they were pressured by a press conference. Of course, they care about them. We had 33 straight days below 30, 32 degrees. It's, we've just had a terrible winter. And I guess I've been lifted up by the fact that most of the people I talk to are not writing things like, like I saw on that screen. They're saying, we know the potholes are bad. We want them fixed, but we understand. And we know our city employees are working their rear ends off. We appreciate them. Same thing with the flooding. They're doing everything they can. We're a policymaking body. We appropriate money. We ought to be cheering them on. They're the operational people. Let them get the work done. Let's get out of the way and let them get it done. And let's give them encouragement. Not be trashing them and telling them that they're not working hard enough, or they don't know how to fix a road, so they don't care. It's, it's not a matter of money. It's not a matter of motivation. We just needed the weather to turn. Period.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to jump on with what Counselor Nitzer said. I think we're all very appreciative of our city staff. I don't think that was ever the intent. In fact, the intent of this was to get our employees home, to not have to work nights and weekends like they've had to do. They've had to pull off of filling potholes during the winter. We fix potholes year round, not very effectively in January when it's 20 below or it's raining. But we still have, we talk about people who are suffering from the flooding. We're talking about people, we have one in the audience tonight, and we have had people who, it's a substantial impact to their family budget when they replace tires, when they replace fenders, when they have suspension problems. So nobody's here saying that our city employees aren't doing their job, or not doing a good job, or that we're not there. What we're trying to say is, we're the policymakers. This is important to our citizens and their safety. I followed a police officer the other day who looked like he was going down a solemn, slalom course down Minnesota Avenue. Guess what? He's not paying attention to what's going on on the radio, the call he's going to, and who knows where he's gonna cross the yellow line several times while he was trying to avoid potholes. What we, the reason this ordinance was brought forward is so we could supplement the budget and say, this is a priority. This is important. We don't want our staff to work extra hours. They're already doing that for us. We've had to pull them off of other things. We heard the police chief last week say that he's had to pull his staff off of normal traffic duty to take care of special events. It's our job as the policymakers to say, here are the funds. This is important to our citizens. If we don't move forward with this and say this is a priority, I'm not a construction expert. I don't expect to be. But I am, I do appreciate what Director Cotter does. And this gives him the policy directive that this is important and it needs to be done. We need to continue to fill potholes year round, because we've pulled those people in January, even though it's a temporary solution so that people's cars aren't damaged. But we've, we're getting that chance to have the money in advance. There are two ways that you can do this. You can wait till the entire budget's expended and then come back and ask for a supplemental, or you can be in front of it from a policies side that allows that. And we're gonna need this appropriation. Even if this appropriation passed, we're looking at the end of April, first part of May, if we did need the money. So this gives us the opportunity to move forward and take that proactive approach. I can thank employees all day long. I need them home with their families. I need them home to have a weekend off or an opportunity to not be putting their, to work at hours that make sense, like Director Cotter said, on some of the busiest intersections to do that. It, it, it's a dangerous job, and I appreciate everything they do. I just want to make sure that we give them the opportunity to be creative. Maybe it's summer help that temporary employees that we hire and bring them in early so that people can use leave or whatever it takes to be creative. But it's not gonna be the money that stops them from being creative.
Counsel Kylie.
Thank you very much. Again, we do have 92% of the budget that is still available. We've just used over 8% of the existing budget. And the reason you do not do an appropriation at the front end of a budget cycle is because in doing so, you potentially take money away from other projects where it could have been put to use. And then at the, only to find out in the end of the year that you did not stress your budget to its limit. And you still have leftover money in this budget, yet the other budget was, was shorted as a result of that. So we do have a process. It's, part of it is the 25% reserves that we leave in the budget for emergency situations, such as the ice storm a number of years ago, or for this. If we do need this for snow removal or for continuing to fix the streets, that's the appropriate time to make an additional appropriation. I mean, we, we all acknowledge, everybody at this DIAS acknowledges potholes are bad. Everybody in this room and community acknowledges potholes are bad. We are all very cognizant of that, because we all drive the, drive the streets. It is a function of weather. Unfortunately, we have not had the ability to get out there. It's, it's really a matter of physics with the, with the freezing contraction, freezing contraction. You get water in these small crevices, it freezes, it expands, and it just breaks your surface away. You, you just can't fight Mother Nature. And Mother Nature is throwing us a terrible curveball. So we are all aware of that. Hopefully, the Mother Nature will continue to cooperate like it has in the last few days. Unfortunately, it's forecast for more rain and much more snow melt coming from north. So we do have other issues that we have to concentrate on, too. But I think we as a public can help out, too. We, again, I just mentioned, we all acknowledge the issue. So we have a responsibility to drive the conditions. In fact, a motorist can be pulled over for driving within the speed limit, yet they're exceeding the conditions that really dictate how you should be driving, whether that's ice or snow. In this case, it could be potholes. So I would just encourage motorists to slow down, maybe leave a little bit earlier, and take your time so that you are safe and that the rest of the motorists are safe around you as well, too. So that's just a little bit different tact. I think that with a little additional time to travel, we can still get to where we need and maybe save on some of those damages that that we're all concerned about. So, thank you.
I'd like to ask for a motion on this item. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to move to set this to a second hearing, second reading on Tuesday, April 2nd.
All right. Moved by Counsel Staley. Is there a second on that?
Second, Starr.
Seconded by Counsel Starr. I'll call for a vote on-
Well, I'd like to, I have another statement, please.
Yes, floor is yours.
But we're hearing that the city has been patching potholes all winter. We've been doing it all winter. I, I'm calling this a pothole crisis. And and it's, it's intersecting with a possible flood crisis. But it doesn't take away from the fact that our roads are in horrible shape. They're, they're dangerous. And and to tell people to slow down as if this is some kind of a icy condition, I, I just don't think that's gonna sit well with our citizens. I am hearing from people that are upset. Maybe my colleagues aren't, but I am hearing it loud, loudly and clearly. Counsel Kylie just said, the money is, this would be taking money from other projects. The budget, we may be only 8% into it, but it's all accounted for. They have plans for our money. This is additional money where we're saying, we want this to be used to, for this pothole crisis to add even more energy. We're already doing it. As Counsel Nitzer said, these guys are working their rear ends off. We don't want them to have to work their rear ends off. We want more rear ends coming in to help. So this is money that can be used for salaries to say, let's give more of an impetus to that. We will bring forward things like this in the future. We're not gonna be bullied into saying, you know, you, we don't have a right to propose things within our, our council that, when we see there's something that can help our citizens. And so this is, to me, it makes perfect sense. Hire some extra staff. We want to get these potholes filled as quickly as possible. And I think the city's on the right track for doing that.
Counsel Sale.
Just to be clear, I am also hearing from citizens concerned about the condition of our streets. None of those concerns have been irrational or have been over the top. They understand. They, they've indicated to me what is going on, and I've relayed the information that has been provided by the Public Works. And they've been very satisfied with that. I am not going to support this in the, for two reasons. First off, it was not conceived with professional input by people in the city or by outside people on what the solution would be. You can't always just throw money at something and come up with a solution. That's the first reason. And the second reason is, the people that I trust to make these decisions, the Public Works Department, has not requested this money yet. If they come to us in two weeks, two days, two months, and said, and say, we did need that $500,000, I'll be the first one to make the motion. But at this time, they have not indicated that. They do have a plan, and I'm gonna support their current plan, and I'm not gonna vote for the appropriation.
All right, Counsel. Counsel Selberg.
I would just say, you know, I appreciate the effort and your energy on this. It just kind of comes down to me, this has nothing to do with bullying or anything else. I just talked to the people in charge of these departments and asked them if they needed these funds, and they told me they were fine. So I guess in that simple way, I'm not gonna support it.
All right, Counsel Brecky.
I was just gonna, you know, add my two cents to it. I do want to thank Teresa for bringing this issue forward in this fashion. I'm not gonna be voting for it, because my questions got answered by Mark Cotter, in that, you know, it is a highly special situation, but what they are choosing to contract out, you know, are the, the flooding services. And then they're gonna focus, you know, on the street services. So I think we've got the focus where we need it. And I'm, you know, after hearing our finance director and, and Mark, I, I believe we've got the, the finances, you know, there. And so I don't think we need the extra burst at this point, maybe if it was later in the year. But I, I really do wanna, I want to acknowledge that Teresa hears a lot more from citizens, I believe, than most of us do, because she reaches out a lot more than most of us do. Her Facebook page, her response to phone calls. So when she tells me that she's hearing things, I, I think she's hearing a lot more mixed reviews a lot of the time than I am. Maybe I can't speak for everyone else, but I know that the volume of calls and contacts that she receives far exceeds anything I ever receive on an issue. And so, you know, I pay special attention to that. And I think as a council, we all should, because if we were reaching out as much as she is, we might hear more. And so when she brings something forward and wants to react to those citizens, you know, I'm, I'm gonna give that due diligence. I'm gonna really look hard at that, because I know that in a lot of ways, she's got her fingers on the pulse of, of, you know, what people are saying out there. In this situation, I don't think we need the money because of, you know, the financial situation and the fact that we're in the early part of the budget. And like Kurt, I'll wait until they come. But I'm glad you raised the issue. I'm glad you acknowledged, you know, what the citizens are saying, good and bad, out there. You know, I'm hearing a mix, and you always will. You know, we, I talked to the mayor earlier tonight. Everybody thinks that everything that happens is the city's problem when there's a crisis like this. You know, but I, I won't be voting for it. But I, I do think it was a worthy discussion. And I do think that it, you know, had not Mark Cotter, you know, mentioned that, you know, how he is shifting his priorities and contracting the flood services out, you know, I would have wanted to push some money, you know, into, you know, into making this a priority, because clearly we have a unique situation here, because we have, we have dual bosses. We've got the flood bossing us around, and we got the potholes bossing us around. So we need to, you know, double, double down. So thank you for listening to me, and I, I appreciate the effort, but I am going to be, you know, voting against it.
I'm gonna call for the vote on this item, please.
Counsel Member Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
No.
Erickson.
No.
Kylie.
No.
Nitzer.
No.
Selberg.
Sale.
No.
All right, that item fails six to two. Item 58.
Item 58, a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls approving diagonal parking on South Elmwood Avenue.
Good evening, Kirk Peppel, Public Works Engineering. This item goes along with item 49 from earlier. Along the west side of the Lifescape property on Elmwood Avenue, the one-way northbound between 26th and 28th. This resolution is for diagonal parking on the west side of road, of the road to help for addressing the neighborhood parking concerns around Lifescape. As I stated before, city staff held an open house on March 11 to discuss the proposed changes. Five residents attended. Engineering is not aware of any opposition to the proposal.
Thanks, Kirk. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Kurt on this one?
Move to approve, Erickson. Second.
All right, move to approve by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion, counsel? Vote on this, please.
Counsel Member Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
I, I wanted to have one little point of discussion, just-
Can I retract the call for the vote?
I, I had my finger up, and it caught my eye, but-
Technically, I can't, I can't retract the vote, so, the call for the vote. So we need to move ahead with the vote. I apologize. I didn't see you.
Brecky.
I just wanted to thank Erica. I'm voting yes.
Certainly thank her.
She got left out of the mix. Sorry. Sorry. I'm out of order.
No problem.
But I vote yes.
Right. Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 59.
Item 59, a resolution recommending that the events campus study group meetings be open to the public.
Counsel Staley.
I, I've been talking with Counselor Starr about this as well, and also had a conversation with Counselor Brecky about it. I wanted to go through, this is called setting a standard for openness and transparency in city government. And in this discussion goes past this, this particular event center task force. This is, to me, it's making a statement about how we feel about our open meetings for our public. public. I came up with a resolution timeline. In January 28th, 2019, the Events Center Campus Study Group was announced. On January 28th, 2019, the Argus Leader had an article about it, panel-eying Events Center Campus Future to Hold Closed Door Meetings. That's the first time I heard anything about these meetings being closed to the public. And that article talked about the mayor saying that he was going to be in the meetings. They were going to talk about things more freely, having it being closed. At one point, T.J. Nelson, his chief of staff, said, sometimes you've got to shut the door to get things done. And these things were never written down from the mayor, but they're coming at us from the media. So I'm hearing about it. From February to March, I'm hearing community concern about the community's inability to participate in the process. And I will agree with what the Argus Leader said, that in the past with Mayor Huether, when he had task force groups formed, it was very open. People were able to view the conversation, or listen to the conversation, be in the room with the people, and we came out with a very, very good product. On March 2nd, or excuse me, 6th, we sent a resolution to the city attorney's office for review. And of course, resolutions are not binding. These are just suggestions, requests. On March 12th, last Tuesday, the agenda approval forum for the resolution was signed by the city attorney, and the citizens I speak with are not aware that in order for anything to show up on our council agenda, it has to have two sponsors. I can't just put something on the agenda. And then the other thing people aren't aware of is that you have to, the city attorney also has to sign off on whatever you're proposing. So this resolution, Counselor Starr signed it, and then the city attorney reviews anything that comes to this body and then has to sign off on it. Then on March, so we got that in on March 12th. March 13th, the Events Center Campus Study Group delivered a letter to the local media, which I did not see that. But the morning after we had this signed, they came up with a letter saying they were opening this to the public, and today we are considering the resolution, which I kept on the agenda. The resolution, which I, that I've proposed, and I understand Counselor Knightzert has, he's going to be making a recommendation to change some of the wording here, but I want to read this. "A resolution recommending that the Events Center Campus Study Group meetings be open to the public. Whereas the Events Campus Study Group was formed to evaluate the current and future needs of the Denny Sanford Premier Center Campus and make recommendations that will enhance the success of the campus and its economic impact for the community. Whereas the mayor's office has publicly stated that the Events Center Campus Study Group meetings will be closed to the public. Whereas the city council is elected to represent the citizens of Sioux Falls and serve as the city's policymaking body and legislative body. Whereas the Denny Sanford Premier Center Campus includes public property that is comprised of the Denny Sanford Premier Center, Sioux Falls Convention Center, Arena, Sioux Falls Stadium, Howard Woodfield, and land leased by the Sheraton Hotel. Whereas the public overwhelmingly supported the construction of a $115 million multi-purpose event center with 58% in the November 8th, 2011 advisory election. Whereas the city council believes that the public has a financial interest in the future of the Events Center Campus. Whereas the city council believes there is a rational presumption by the public that city-initiated working groups, task forces, and committees are open and accountable to them." And I should say, I'm going to add, they should always be that way. I will always strive to keep things open for the citizens. Whereas the city council believes that South Dakota's open meeting law embodies the principle that the public is entitled to the greatest possible information about public affairs and is intended to encourage public participation in government. Whereas a publication by the South Dakota Attorney General, South Dakota Municipal League, and others entitled Conducting the Public's Business in Public states that task forces, committees, and working groups that are advisory-only may not be subject to the open meetings law but are encouraged to comply with, to the extent possible, when public matters are discussed. And whereas the city council finds no compelling argument offered to support closed meetings of the Events Center Campus Study Group. And that the city council, be it resolved, that the city council strongly recommends that all Events Center Study Campus Group meetings be open to the public." Next slide, please. So, what I thought was interesting is that Counselor Sale gave us a briefing after their first meeting, and I didn't hear him say that they had voted at that time or even discussed opening these to the public. So, the morning after we had signed our resolution, this is, Mayor Ten Haggen sent this to me this week after I requested it, something in writing. This was the letter sent by one of the co-chairs. Dear Mayor Ten Haggen, as you know, we had our first meeting on February 27th. It is an exceptional group that is excited about the work in front of us and the potential for this area. A couple of things have been clear to us already. First, a great deal of education is needed before we are ready to discuss the future of the arena. We toured some of the facilities during the first meeting, and we anticipate needing at least two more meetings before everyone is educated on the topics surrounding the campus. Second, the committee has voted to make our meetings open to the public and media. We see no harm in having interested parties gain the same education we are as we progress through this process. If non-public information ever needs to be shared, we would like to retain the ability to meet in executive session. At this point, we don't ever see the need for that, but we want to remain sensitive to outside parties that might have information they would like to share with the task force. Third, we are working on a plan and calendar that will include public listening sessions, public input, and online surveys to help guide both this process and the task force itself. We will need some city assistance from city staff to help create and host that survey online, as well as help publicize the listening and public input sessions. We hope to have the opportunity, or we appreciate the opportunity, to serve this amazing city, Jeff Eckhoff and Dan Stanema, which I had asked Dan to be here today, and I don't see him to talk about that. So, again, setting a standard for openness and transparency in city government. I know that we've just, I got information about studying the light poles in our city, having a study group, and so I said, is this going to be open to the public? I think we need to set a standard within our council of saying, is this going to be something we want, that we think's important? Or, and if we need to have a resolution every time the mayor, if he tries to, you know, if he wants to move forward with something else that's going to be closed to do this again, that's fine. I know Counselor Knightzert is going to be, he's going to change this to commending the group. That's great. I'm not going to oppose that, but I don't think it should be up to a group of citizens to decide if they're going to be an open or closed group, especially when they're dealing with citizen taxpayer entities. We shouldn't allow them to do that. We are the body that should make that decision. So, in closing, gratitude for the task force efforts towards transparency. Trust that the task force will be receptive to public input. I'd like to have public input at the end of their meetings. Let the citizens who are there listening get up and give some feedback. Assurance that the city will continue its tradition of open meetings, and please support this resolution.
Thank you, counselor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Someone trying to be aware of this. When the mayor did this committee meeting and set up these people for this committee meeting, we have an attorney from Cutler Law Firm. So the city has to be careful on who they put in our committee meeting with Cutler Law Firm. But we have a young attorney from Cutler Law Firm on this committee. So I'm just letting you know because more of the cat will come out of the bag from Cutler Law Firm in the next couple of weeks. So if we're going to deal with corruption-
This is about the openness of the meetings, not about the makeup of the group. Thank you. Any other public input on this? I look for a motion or, tell them like Counselor Knightzert, you may have an amendment?
Yeah, we'll need a motion to approve first, which I'll wait for.
Okay, move to approve by Erickson. Is there a second on this?
Second.
Seconded by Staley. Counselor Knightzert.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend by substituting the resolution labeled Res. 0022 with the resolution labeled Res. 0022A.
Second, Erickson.
Counselor Knightzert, floor is yours.
Thank you. I support the general spirit of the resolution, namely to state that we value transparency and public input when task forces are working on behalf of the citizens. I know personally from the annexation task force that we had better recommendations and ultimately more community support at the end because we took a lot of public input throughout the process. However, facts have changed since the sponsors submitted this resolution for consideration on tonight's agenda. So tonight, I'm just proposing that we preserve the general spirit of the resolution but recognize the events of the last week, and Jim has put the changes up. And there's also copies over at the table if anyone wants to grab one. First of all, my amendment changes the title of the resolution to a resolution commending the decision to open the Events Campus Study Group meetings to the public. Next, I've updated a clause so that it's past tense instead of present tense. Specifically, I changed has present tense to had initially, and will present tense to would past tense in the following statement. Whereas the mayor's office had initially publicly stated that the Events Campus Study Group meetings would be closed to the public, next I've updated the clause to state that we as a council value transparency, where before it was saying we find no compelling argument to support closed meetings, which these no longer will be. So that statement simply now reads, whereas the city council values transparency and recognizes the benefits of public engagement and input of the Events Campus Study Group. And finally, I updated the therefore clause at the end of the resolution to more accurately reflect where the facts are now, as opposed to where they were last week when the resolution was submitted. Specifically, rather than stating that we recommend meetings be public, I'm simply proposing that we commend the decision of the mayor and the campus study group to open the meetings to the public so that the statement would now read that the city council commends the decision by Mayor Paul Ten Haggen and the Events Campus Study Group to open the group's meetings to the public. I believe these changes reflect the events of the last week while preserving the original spirit and motivation of the sponsors. If we adopt the resolution, it's going to be a permanent part of our history, and we just need to ensure that the resolution accurately reflects the facts as we know them today. And I believe these changes will do just that, that it will preserve, I hope, what the sponsors were going for, which I totally support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Counselor Knightzert, Counselor Starr. Yes, I have a point of parliamentary inquiry. I'd have a question for the city attorney if I could. What, I guess I'm, if I may?
The parliamentarian's a city clerk, but I'll-
Actually, I guess I should address it then to the parliamentarian. My question is, does this substantially changes the intent of the resolution? Would we need to defer this to April 2nd to give the public the opportunity to review the changes? Because this amendment does substantially change what was noticed and put forward for the public.
Yeah, so the requirement to notice for substantial amendments is applicable to ordinances within title, within chapter 9-19 of South Dakota codified law. It doesn't necessarily provide, it doesn't provide for the rereading or a second notice of resolutions. In Robert's Rules of Order, it does indicate that a substitute of an entire motion, which is how I would term this, is permissible. And so, just kind of as a additional point, there can be a secondary amendment made to this particular amendment, but if this amendment gets voted upon and if it fails, then obviously we go back to the main motion. If it gets voted upon and it passes, we actually have to consider it again, kind of from the start tonight, meaning that you can subsequently amend the substitute motion.
With that advice, I'd move to defer till April 2nd meeting.
Second.
All right, a motion to defer this to April 2nd, seconded by Counselor Staley. I'll call for a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Breckie.
No.
Erickson.
No.
Kylie.
No.
Knightzert.
No.
Selberg.
No.
Sale.
No.
All right, that fails six to two. So we're back to the amendment that's on the floor that has a second, as submitted by Counselor Knightzert. Counselor Sale.
I'd like to, hopefully I can bring a little clarity to this issue, being in on the meetings. Yeah, I did report some of the findings to the informational meeting to the council. That's what had happened. The discussion at that meeting on how to have public input was not finalized because the suggestions went everywhere, from survey to public input at meetings, to public input online. Do we start up a website? Those things have not been decided yet. Also, there is the question of, is there budgetary money available from the mayor's office to substantiate some of those, if it is a website or a survey, whether that needs to be done? Unfortunately, neither one of the chairs can attend tonight, and I have reached out and talked to both of them on several occasions on several of the issues. So they apologize for not being here and trust me to relay that the intent of this is to solicit public input, certainly from those people who have sat on previous panels like this, because there have been several. And they realize that the hard work that has gone into this thing for generations is, needs to be pushed forward. So there will be public input. It's not finalized on how it's going to be done yet. The group was very adamant that they needed more ideas than just sat in the room. So it will be done, and I appreciate Counselor Knightzert's attempt to make this so, it's not so binding that it sounds like everything that has been done has been behind closed doors. It's not a finished product yet. And both the chairs indicated to me that that would have been readily information to any of the city council members had they asked for it previously. So that's where we're at today. The intent of the group is to make it public. They haven't determined the process yet.
Thank you, Counselor Sale. Counselor Staley.
So, they haven't determined the process of making it public?
Correct.
So people won't be able to be in and on the meetings? I mean, the meetings are going to be open to, my goal here was that they will be open to the public.
Correct.
And the, so you're making it sound like that's kind of, that's not-
The point is very clear. The intent from the committee is to make the open meetings so people can attend. How they will receive public input has not been determined yet.
And let me just say, you said that there may be budgetary problems, so maybe I could, we could allocate the five-
Not problems, it's just issues.
Five hun, issues. 500,000, could go for that.
I'm sure the committee would take 500,000 dollars.
Thank you, Counselor Sale. Is there, let's, I'm going to ask for a vote on Counselor Knightzert's amendment, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
No.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. So we're at the amended main motion that's on the floor then. Any further discussion on that, Counselor Starr? Yes, thank you. And again, thank you to Counselor Knightzert. I think this puts it in the tone that we probably are, that I originally intended and to come to this conclusion. You know, last week was National Sunshine Week, where we talk about openness in government and transparency, or the lack of it oftentimes. It's almost become a statewide joke for us of what our openness and transparency and sunshine laws are in South Dakota. Some of the major things that even happen in our community have taken lawsuits by the media. They have to sue us as public officials to get public information. This resolution reminds us that openness and transparency is required, not just a good thing, not something to aspire to, not a great campaign promise that should be made. It's something that we should do on a regular basis. It's difficult that we have to get to this point, but we're doing the right thing. We're opening things up, we're allowing the public. Again, I really respect what Counselor Knightzert had to say, that with the annexation task force, Counselor Kylie and your group did an awesome job of listening to the public, and we ended up with a better product because of it. This project has had a lot of issues and a lot of interest from our community. People want to be involved. Over 100 people applied for the committee. There are only a few chosen that could be part of it, of any group, before it becomes too large, and I think the number is a good size. and I think the number is a good size. Now that, uh, one of the things that I've been concerned since I've been on the council is that we, as a body sometimes, and as an administration, have talked about things over and over. And we talk about it, but the general public doesn't. And they don't see it in the newspaper or on television until it's a finalized plan. And then we have a hard time understanding, hey, we put all these hours into this, we worked on it. We just didn't bring the public along as we make those recommendations. And then we can't understand why our, our taxpayers are upset about it. By opening this group, it's going to bring the community along. This is a jewel of our community. We've spent a lot of time, whether it's consultants, talk, what do we do to, to make this the best it can be? And now we can get everyone's idea and input as part of it. It's truly open and transparent. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Starr. Counselor Breckie?
You didn't think you were going to get to go home tonight without, without me talking about transparency. And I do, I recognize everybody's tired and wants to leave, but this is, you know, it's really important. And I would say this, I was gone last week, and when I came home, um, to find out that this was, had, had been dealt with and open, I was just thrilled. I'm, I don't care how it happened or, or anything like that, but I was concerned when I heard that those committee meetings were going to be closed. And the reason I was concerned is because I hearkened back to, what, what is in the final whereas? It's that conducting the public's business in public, that is always been sort of the anchor opinion, uh, document, you know, for the city, as to, you know, as to that issue of committees. Depending on what the committee does, you know, technically, they're not, not always required by law. Sometimes they are by the open meeting laws. But that's always been, you know, to me, like, one of the anchor pieces of, you know, of documentation that, that really kind of advises us that we should have everything open. And I think we need to remind ourselves from time to time that the open meeting laws, you know, that, that's not the high bar, that's the low bar. I mean, it's not, um, that's where you start. Um, when you really believe in transparency and you're committed to it, you know, that's, that's the bottom. And, and what you try to do is you, in, in my philosophy, is when in doubt, open it up. And you have to have some good reason not to. And so, I was just, I just, I saw a change, I was happy to see the change. Um, and then the other thing, I would, I would just hearken back, those two together, this, the conduct, conducting the public's business in public, and then, you know, thirty-four oh-oh-seven Canon Five of our Code of Ethics, you know, says, "The city council shall conduct the affairs of the city in an open and public manner. The city council should be aware of the letter and intent of the state's open meeting laws, should conduct the affairs of the city council consistent with the letter and spirit of that law, and consistent with the need to inspire, maintain, and maintain public confidence in the integrity and fairness of city government and in the office of city council member." Um, those two together, you know, have always been, to me, the benchmark, where you, where you start with. And, and when you have that as your philosophy, then you really do buy into the when in doubt, open it up philosophy, which has always been mine. And I would just add one other thing, just as a point of experience. And, you know, you've referenced your annexation committee, but I will tell you of having sat on years, in years, literally tons of, of committee meetings that were, that were open. The only thing that I can ever remember the downside of it was, on occasion, when you're, when the committee's in this green light thinking mode, some idea pops out, and it ends up being a news story, and it gets torpedoed, and it gets blown out of proportion, and the Argus Leader would take a straw poll, and it, it dies on the vine. And the green light thinking is stifled a bit because it was never, and it might have been a good idea, but it was never allowed to emerge or develop into what it could have been because it just kind of popped out, out there, kind of off the wall. And then it, it, it could have, it could have, you know, developed into something good, because in the green light thinking mode, that's what happens in those committees. So, there is that. But with responsible reporting, um, that didn't happen very often. It really didn't happen very often. So, to me, that's the only thing you have to be afraid of, that, that somewhat of a chilling effect, um, of not, not getting to fully explore, you know, some sort of off-the-wall idea. But for the most part, um, it, that just didn't happen that much. And I don't ever recall anything else that really, um, distracted from the mission of what was going on in the committees. And I always, really, more than not, you, the benefit of having the public involved far outweighed, um, the concern about having the news media there and, and what happened as a result of it. So, I'm just glad that, uh, that this is happening, and I'm, I'm glad that, and I hope that, you know, we kind of just take this path in the future of, you know, when in doubt, open it up. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, councillor. I'm going to call for a vote on the amended main motion, please. Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Councillors, any new business?
Move to adjourn, Starr.
All right, move to adjourn by Starr. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kylie. All those in favor, say yes?